Let the minutes reflect what we have in common. We're going to begin with our prayer led by Commissioner Martin and our.
Heavenly Father, we're humbled to be in your presence today. We're Lord and will conduct the business of Wilson County. And Father, we just ask that you be with those that are sick or in need of your healing hand. And Father, we just ask that you help us as we prepare to celebrate the birth of your son, Jesus Christ, as this season approaches. Lord, just help us to do everything that you would have us to do it in your eyes. The Lord just blesses us through your service in Jesus. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation of God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas side, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Move to agenda item number three on public comments with that one. A public sign up is Ray Wolf, Mayor of...
There we go. I need to talk to these two gentlemen because these three I've either talked to personally, sent text messages to, called on the phone, and I've gotten the wrong, never gotten anything. What I want to know is how, when y'all get a budget for like the juvenile probation, it gives you, here's what we're paying everybody, this is what Clarence County owes, this is what this one owes. We don't get the city of Stockville when we did a tax bill. All we get is you owe X number of dollars. We don't know what that X number of dollars is for. And I've asked, you can talk to these three. I, and I apologize to you, you, and you, because I talked to the judge in June, hoping that we would get it straight for this budget year, so y'all three would not be on the bill. When I called the judge in October, or texted the judge in October, he said, "Well, haven't you gotten, you never text me back, so I figured you got your information." I didn't know I was supposed to get texting back, okay? I just thought, he said he would get it for me, he would get it for me. So to y'all three, I apologize because I didn't text him back, okay? But I had started texting, like at 5:15 in the morning, I don't have it, 6:09 in the morning, I don't have it. I did do that. Because I want them to know I'm serious. I even asked to be on the agenda today, and they refused to put me on the agenda. I even text them at 8:45 in the morning, Friday morning, and said, "Look, I know you're going to post an agenda. Can I be on it?" Not a word. I even text them at 1 o'clock and said, "Y'all didn't put me on there. Can I at least be?" Not a word. Man, that's the way we want the commission court to be. Don't talk to anybody. The problem is, so y'all understand, y'all can blame the tax collector and all that, I don't care who you blame. The bottom line is she presents a budget proposal to the county for income. It is up to whoever, she didn't hand put that into the budget, I promise you. She didn't come in here and hand put that to the budget. There is a person that is by law in charge of the budget for Wilson County. It's stated in the law. You people certify that the budget is correct. It is, we have asked all questions, we're now certifying that the budget is correct. So let me just tell you one of the problems. I hadn't seen the whole thing, I don't. Well, one of it is that 80% of the money spent at the tax office, 80%, for vehicle registration, taxes, and all that need to be charged to all the various entities. 80%. That means it's four, so if I go in there and register my vehicle, and it takes five minutes, you're telling me it takes 20 minutes? 20 minutes to do, open up an envelope and post your taxes? That's what you're telling me? I don't think that's right. And the only thing I'm going to say, and I'm through, I think my granddaughter. The last time y'all did that was 2019. Not 2020, not 2021, '22, or '23, 19. That's all I got to say. That's best job you can do for me. Let's go to the document.
All right, thank you, Mr. Wolf. We'll move to agenda item number four.
Mayor of Stockton.
All right, we have a certificate here from Criminal Justice Information Services, security privacy training for Tulioana Lopez. Another certificate of completion for Commissioner John Scott Aiken, he attended 17-hour continuing education at the 101st Annual CJAC Day of Texas Conference. We'll put those in a minute. Move to agenda item number five, we have extension activity reports.
Good morning, everybody. How are y'all?
Good morning.
Good, and you? So any reminders, you have our extension activity reports for you to look at. Ms. Allison is handing out our end of, our year end summaries for you to look at. Just a little light reading. I think there's about 10 pages on there. These summaries are what we give to our, to y'all and our stakeholders, so. And, most importantly, we have our breakfast in the judges' conference room after commissions court, so always welcome to come down and get a little breakfast for the day, okay? Thank you. Any questions? There's really that little slow turn for us. We just kind of make it, fit it in there, so. So if we welcome everybody to the breakfast, it's our greatest thing. We appreciate all of our support.
I assume y'all set up a little report.
Yes, so we'll be all down there soon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda item number six, we have our county clerk, the e-recording partner discussed, take action on approving memorandums of understanding between Wilson County and the following vendors, county clerk, e-recording, a central file LLC, e-recording partner network, and C Corporation Service Company.
Okay, so what this is, e-recording, is all the deeds, the public records that we get in through, at the counter, title companies, attorneys, they can do it electronically now. Well, if you sign the MOUs with these three companies, that would hopefully take away a little bit of the foot traffic that we get. Sometimes we're backed up because we're having to scan every document that comes in to give it back to them, and we get a lot. We get about 50 documents a day or more, and a lot of those could be 20, 30, 40 pages. So this does not come, we don't pay for this. The attorneys, the title companies, pay these vendors. And then they pay us our recording fees. So the convenience charge, all of that, that goes to the vendors. And they take that straight out, they just pay us through ACH. So I'd really like to do this if y'all would allow it. The county attorney did look at all the contracts already.
Yes, I did. It's fine, and it certainly would make it much more efficient if people are able to defile these documents, and there is no cost to the county. It's whoever's filing, they pay the fees, and then the recording fees are submitted, so. It's a great move towards trying to consolidate and be more efficient, so.
This is our document. What, which one do we put? Is one of these, which one needs to be signed? Do we have an original?
I have one right here.
Okay, so upon passive, do we do that? And so, all three of these are different companies, or they do different, they do different, and so they can pick and choose, do they?
Yes.
What's it, okay.
And these are like the top three. There's a few more. These are the top three that most counties use.
They all make the motion to approve the memorandums of understanding between Wilson County and simple file LLC, e-recording partners network, and corporation service company. Motion been made by Commissioner Martin, second by Commissioner King. Is there any other discussion on agenda item number six?
Discussion? Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
I know that we already have these services, since we have the treasure here, how is it conveyed into our checking account as far as ACH? Is that just going to go into the general fund? Is there something that we need to dedicate in the way of banking?
The way we set that up with being credit card usage, we have a credit card clearing account.
Okay.
So we'll go into that account, and then at the end of the month, once we reconcile their monthly reports, just any office has their amount that will be transferred then into our general. So yeah, those funds do get transferred initially, they go through our credit card claims, that's how initially was set up, paid, and then from there it will be transferred. We do that across the board for all, district clerk, county clerk, all JPs. Yeah. So it doesn't affect me.
Just one more memorandum.
I don't know that it needs to be kept separate.
I don't think so, no.
Because there's no expense to the county for it, so we won't see any past due.
No. She'll still record it monthly on her monthly report, because you're going to take some in cash, or checks, or by credit card, I guess. Yeah, because this, not everybody's going to e-record, yeah, so.
But it's not any different than what she's doing now, other than it's just an additional service provided to the public. But there's no change in how we are charging people or collecting money.
No additional line item needed or anything.
But the collection's being done by an outside provider, and they're paying us.
But that's what's being done now.
Oh, it is.
With our credit card company. Our credit card company collects it, and then they turn around and deposit the funds in our account.
Yeah, we'll...
The difference is, this is done somewhere else, and right now everything's done in your office facility.
Right. And we'll still have to, when the document comes in, we still have to index it, we still have to verify it. We're still doing all of that. They're just taking it for us and basically scanning it and rejecting it if it's not a legal document.
Any other discussion? The ballot call for the vote, all those favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against?
Thank you. I just wanted to remind everybody, after y'all have breakfast, to come to the clerk's office for cookies and cocoa with clerks.
This is not the season of the year to die. Thank you.
Exactly.
Agenda item number seven, we have discussed and approved the interlocal agreement with the regional public defender office, local government corporation, RPPO, in Wilson County, and I think this is an annual thing that we do. Is that correct, Ms. Yarone?
I believe so, yes.
Because I looked at the paperwork from last year, and it's, we have to do it every year. Yeah, I want to take a look at that. Ms. Yarone, just so that I'm correct, this is only for capital cases, correct?
Yes.
How many do we aggregate in Wilson, is that for the whole 81st judicial district?
Yes, it's not, I mean, it's not part of our office, it's the district attorney's office.
Right.
That handles that. So it's for the district.
We haven't had a capital case in this county in a while.
No.
I can shift all enterable motion on agenda item number seven. I'll make a motion to approve the interlocal agreement with the regional public defender office, local government corporation, RPPO, in Wilson County.
Second.
Motion been made by Commissioner Martin, second by Commissioner King regarding agenda item number seven. Is there any other discussion?
Judge, do you want to make a comment?
Sure.
Just, just so that the court is aware. It appears, I just now saw this interlocal, so I wanted to confirm that the amount our allocations for Wilson County were what we budgeted for the two years, and it looks like they increased the allocation due to the 2020 census, which is quite higher than what we budgeted because of what we've paid historically every year. So I just want to make the court aware that we have, I think typically we paid it, I can't get it to the penny, but I want to say it's somewhere in the range of $8,800 a year, and it looks like our allocation now is $15,000 and some change. So I just want to make sure that you're aware of that, so when we do get the invoice to pay it, I'll have to note that on the budget, just so that you're aware.
Okay.
No, I mean, when we do the budget, if we didn't have that prior to us approving the budget, we wouldn't have known anyway, so we'll just be over budgeting that line item, and we'll know for fiscal year '25's budget to budget accordingly.
Okay, so that, I'm glad you brought that up. I have not looked at that. I didn't know they had increases, I didn't know the numbers from last year. How do we get this notification from them early on?
I don't know where this, where this came from.
I don't know how they get that figure. I'm trying to remember, but I mean, I don't know if they ever send us a letter or anything.
I'm thinking it's done every two years, because that's what it was, so I couldn't even remember when it came. Two years ago, it was probably at the old rate, so, but as far as getting it, is that dated anymore?
I'll have to reach out to someone over there.
Yeah, I could just ask if they did, you know, for future reference and, you know, dance, and we can budget accordingly.
You have the 200, three counties that are having the same problem?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other discussion? Here now, call for the vote, all those favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against? Move to agenda item number eight, discuss and take action on professional services contract forensic pathology. Autopsy services with Dr. Ray Fernandez, not his MD, Corvus Christie. Let me start that off by, okay, so we all, so there's no confusion from the public that's listening or the audience. I mean, we have already begun the planning process for the money that was allocated to us by the state of Texas to build our home medical examiner office that will become the 81st judicial in 2018. We're not even, I haven't even seen the money back yet, so I don't know where we're at on that. For right now, Bear County's not taking any bodies anymore from Wilson County or any other counties that are strictly with Bear County. Our forensic pathologist in law court's winding down, she's not taking, she's trying to retire. The only other place we can go to now is either Travis County or to Dr. Fernandez and Corvus Christie. We, myself, Judge Liska, Judge Oku, went and visited his facility, he's accredited. He's willing to do this for us on, what he wants is the agreement so that it's easier to accept the bodies otherwise we're going to have to adjust, these are going to have continually filled the forms out. And Judge, you understand, you have to do that a couple of times, we're trying to expedite your work that you do when you're having to do an unattended death inquest. What I like about Dr. Fernandez's services is he, it's not, you can pick and choose what you need done within these forensic services. If someone's killed in an automobile accident, well, obviously it's blunt force trauma, we know that, that's the obvious reason, but you don't want to know, you don't want to know autopsy college, so that's the only thing they'll charge you for. So it's not always a full-blown autopsy. And all he's wanting is this agreement, makes it easier for our judges doing the inquest, and then when we have our own services, medical examiner office, then we won't, we won't have to need their services anymore. Come on up, Judge.
One thing I want, we need this for right now, until we figure out if we're going to be able to get that one. But the other thing is, this whole year we've been all over the map trying to look for places to take bodies before autopsy, autopsy college. And South Texas has been doing it for us for right now. As y'all said, she's wanting to retire. I talked to her last week, and she has no problem us going looking to Dr. Fernandez, so just let you know. But we need this, so we'll get this contract going. Because right now, we don't have no understanding in who we need to send deceased bodies to.
I thank y'all for the discussion. Thank you. Ms. Yarone, I'll entertain a motion for agenda item number eight. I'll make a motion to put forward with the forensic pathology autopsy service with Dr. Ray Fernandez. Motion made by Commissioner King, second by Commissioner Martin regarding agenda item number three. Is there any other discussion? Here now, call for the vote, all those favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against? I have a motion pass. Move to agenda item number nine. We have Cindy Stafford, emergency manager, coordinating, discussing, take action on interlocal agreement between Wilson County and ESD One for 911 mapping and GIS services.
Good morning.
I think you have the chief, do you want him to come up as well? Chief going along? I don't think he'll call me later, so thank you.
I believe he's already given the signed contract that President Trainer signed to Ms. Kennedy. So this contract is between the county and District One for them to continue to do GIS mapping and 911 addressing until we get someone trained and hired. The delay has been that the town chief has been taking our antiquated online version of the map, the CAD map, and putting it online, and we're taking two systems and making it into one. And it's, it's a lot, it doesn't make sense when you've got 911 responders talking about a CAD map, and you've got the CAD system, the tax system talking about the CAD. You have two different groups of people talking about the county map. There shouldn't be, we should have one map, and then you talk about 911 addressing, and you've got different people talking about different maps. So we've got really one expert doing this now, he's creating it, it's going to be online, we have access to it. And then they're of course putting the 911 addressing, which is not really for postal services, it's for response services. Once he gets this up and running, then he'll work with us to train and hire somebody to take over on the county side. So in the interim, he's going to continue to update and get the map corrected. We're going to get ACOG out of the loop and PISA, and we'll be able to take it over fully on the county side.
So long have we, have we resolved the issue of the agreement we had, margin payment to the chief?
I've not received an invoice, but I believe the contract was signed.
We're good with that?
So we have a couple of ILAs, this one we haven't done anything for because we don't have a ILA.
Okay, but we've got it in place, and it's been approved.
Okay.
Okay, so we just need, and you're ready to hand them over.
So if we can, we'll backdate it.
Okay.
November, he's been doing this for several months, but if we can go back.
He started November 1st. Okay, all right.
And that's for the 911 addressing?
That's for 911 addressing, okay. Commissioner, I'll entertain a motion for agenda item number nine.
I make a motion, I approve the interlocal agreement between Wilson County and ESD One for 911 mapping and the GIS services.
Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Perdolo, second by Commissioner King. Is there any other discussion? Here now, call for the vote, all those favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against? I have a motion pass. Thank you. We don't have sheriff's story, do we, agenda item?
Yeah.
No one from sheriff's office will go on to agenda item number whatever?
He has, he probably given it to the dentist's wife.
Oh, okay, fine. Agenda item number eleven, we have Lucy Otto permitting and development director. We'll start with 11A1 through 4.
Good morning. The first utility permit I have for also water supply company. It did have a couple of areas on it, so I got the correct information from this one. They propose to put in a three-foot deep at the bottom of the bar ditch. Their steel casing will be four inches, and the inside service line will be two inches. This will be going in Weston County Road 231 and 229, and is a bore.
I'll make a motion to, I said, 753, also water to bore under County Road 231. Second. Motion made by Commissioner King, second by Commissioner Martin regarding 11A1, permit 753. Any other discussion?
So the other permits that I have is 754 through 756, these are all the same from essence water, just in place.
Hold on, hold on. We probably should combine that, it's available, motion on board, and complete this motion, and then the other. Any other discussion on A1? Here none, call for the vote, all those favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against? I have a motion pass. Now we'll move to 11A2. We'll do that individually, the next two we'll do combined. 11A2, 754.
754 is a proposed two-inch PVC road bore in the county road 331. It is 30 feet across, and it'll be a two-inch PVC made with a one-inch service line.
I'll make a motion to approve permit number 754, essence water off County Road 331. Second. Motion made by Commissioner King, second by Commissioner Martin, and any discussion regarding 11A2, permit 754. Here none, call for the vote, all those favor say aye. Here now, I'll call for the vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against? Eyes have it, motion passes. Move to, now we'll combine 11A3 and 4, 755, and permit 756, precinct number three.
So this one is for precinct three, like you said, it is also a two-inch PVC casing with one-inch service line. First one will go under County Road 332, and the second one, the permit 756, will be proposed in Sullivan Springs under Seventh Street.
All right, Commissioners, I'll entertain a motion for 11A3 and 4.
I'll make a motion that we approve permit 755, off County Road 332, and permit 756 on Seventh Street.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Perdolo, second by Commissioner King regarding 11A3, 4. Any other discussion?
Here none, I'll call for the vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against? Motion passes. We'll now move to 11B1, non-standard plant variants on County Road 120, 3873, precinct number one, Leonard Junior.
Yes, and this information was provided to Commissioner Martin as well. Is, does the standard variance, splitting of a property, there's nothing, there's no structure, there's no bell, there's, they are, the deeds have the utility letters from Picosa, everyone else.
The only question I have, and this is a procedural thing, and I know we don't have that in our procedures right now, but since we've had several of these where deed restrictions say, this can't be done unless it's approved by Commissioners' Court, and I'm just wondering, how does the general public or the adjacent landowners know? Because I mean, in other, in some areas for certain things, is that something that we can do or should do, Mr. Trump? I just, you know, I don't want somebody coming in and saying, well, I didn't know anything about this. If we've got a good answer, then that's fine, but if we don't, I mean, it just seems to me that they, how would we do that, or should we do that?
Well, what is it that you're wanting to do? You want to let the neighbors know that these people are asking for variances, or whether or not they've been approved through their, that the deed restriction provides for certain procedures? There's really no way to let the neighbors know. Now, everything that's done at the planning meeting, I mean, there's an agenda, it states the exact address or the exact location that the variance has been requested. So if there are neighbors that are concerned, they can always look and see, you know, this is going to be addressed by the committee and then submitted to Commissioners' Court. Everyone has a different, I mean, deed restrictions vary from landowner to landowner. Usually in the subdivision, they're the same, but there's no way to really tell everyone around there what's happening unless it's on agenda or it's part of a public hearing or a public forum. I don't know if that answered your question.
Well, a little bit, but I guess, well, I guess then maybe the way to word the question is, do we have the statutory authority to require it?
A statutory what?
Authority to require it.
To do that, to at least notify the adjacent neighbors.
Well, the rules and regulations provide that there is an application, and it does say that if it violates any deed restrictions, then the variance cannot be approved. The homeowner can always, I mean, the committee's the first line of the request, and if the committee feels that this isn't proper, or there's a deed restriction, they're always welcome to come to Commissioners' Court and ask for their variance if, and that's proper. I mean, the county can certainly ask that certain requirements be met, and the application provides that they have to attach any deed restrictions. And if there are deed restrictions against the variance or against the, what they're asking, then they just get a no. I mean, they get a no from the committee.
In this case, they did provide the covenants and restrictions as well as the plat to the subdivision. The covenants and restrictions, it just says that it has to be approved by Commissioners' Court, you know, it's with the property.
Right, but if I bought, if I lived next door, and I bought a lot, I always figured there was going to be one person living next door, and now there's going to be two. And that's why I think they need some kind of notification so that, you know, they object to it, you know, and I'm sure they'll object until they want to do the same thing, you know. And I just want to make sure that we, that people know about these things, and if they're concerned about it, that they can voice their opinion, because with the bug stopping here at this table, in this board, we don't know if anybody objects to this or not. I guess that's my point, is that, you know, it's great that people want to do that, we're following the deed restriction covenants, it says it has to be approved by the support, but I would like to know if the neighbors are happy with it. It's kind of like the similar one we had in Commissioners' Court, it's precinct here a while back, where they took that park and converted it to a lot, you know.
Well, the deed restrictions, and that's what they're designed to do, the restrictions, is to protect the surrounding homeowners, and so that usually prevent subdividing, or provide whatever the restriction is for subdivision. If there is no deed restriction, and that's how you buy your land, and you want to subdivide, well, then you should have a right to do that without having to ask all your neighbors, is it okay that I do this? Because, I mean, there's nothing in their deeds or in their covenants that prevent that, and, you know.
I mean, ultimately, would we take their argument into consideration, or is that being, because they just need to be able to?
Well, right, I mean, yeah, I mean, because it's difficult for me to represent the other folks that live in that neighborhood if I don't know what their opinions is. The other thing that's come up recently, Commissioner Perdolo, I've suddenly tried to get some answers from several citizens, is if an HOA dissolved, and then within that HOA, there were certain rules and regulations, and then we can't completely enforce anything that's, there's no HOA involved.
It's also the neighbors.
It's hard to explain to the public that it becomes a civil matter at that point.
That's true. And there are a lot of people buy their property with HOAs that are semi-active with restrictions, and then they go under, or they just are no longer effective, their recourse is against the HOA, and yet, I mean, there's, the county doesn't really get involved, or it's a civil matter.
Yeah, because I mean, that's another issue, any of these HOAs, formerly they've dissolved over the years. I don't, this one there, I went to my college, but you lose that level of oversight, yes, so to speak. When that does happen, that's a different situation, but.
This one stated that they had an agriculture committee, architectural committee, that's what the subdivision had, but we looked for it.
I honestly don't think it was ever formed, to be honest with you. That's a permanent subdivision, too. Well, I would like to suggest that the committee take a look at that, and evaluate it, I know we've been updating and revising the application for this, and I think I would like to take that into consideration, put that on there.
Were you, maybe a post on the newspaper post, or?
No, I mean, it could be a simple thing of, tell us who your neighbors are, too, whatever, and give us, let us contact them, so that I have that information. It might be a rare of somebody else, how I get more than that.
So you're saying the county needs to contact all of the neighbors?
No, 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 that would be the individual's responsibility. I'm just saying, what do we need to do, what's the right thing to do, so the people know and that they're aware of that, that they want to make their opinion, or they need to know, because I mean, they can come here this morning and speak their piece in a public event, or it could be at the review committee, either one.
Then what's the use of the covenants and restrictions?
Pardon?
What's the use of the covenants and restrictions, we follow the covenants and restrictions on their property.
Well, yeah, that's, well, maybe we are, maybe we aren't. Because all it says is for them to be able to do this, is it has to come to this court. So my question is, how does this court judge whether this is the right thing to do or not?
Well, they don't get here before going through committee, I mean.
Well, but I mean.
This has been reviewed already by.
I understand and I agree with that, that's why I'm suggesting that maybe something in the application process needs to include that, so that we have the information that we want to, if we need to pursue. I mean, I just think the public needs the opportunity to be able to provide their voice without having to check the subdivision agenda every month, you know, to do that. If we can do, if we can, if we're not statutorily allowed to do that, that's what I'm trying to understand, or want to understand.
Well, perhaps an edit on the application would be enough, just asking whether their neighbors are aware of them splitting the property.
Yeah, I mean.
And if they plan on letting their neighbors know.
Something like that, yeah. But I don't know if the owners have an obligation to even do that.
Yeah, no, they don't, and it's very difficult, it's going to be very difficult to provide that kind of restriction on subdivision if they've met the regulations, and then you have a disgruntled neighbor, like, you know, I don't want you to do that, and I'm going to voice that I don't want you to do that, but what can they do? There's not really much, other than urge Commissioners' Court not to approve the variance, but.
Well, and I mean, I notice a lot of these lately, I would say the last half dozen or more, you know, everybody wants to sell an acre so they can have a little bit of money to fix up their place. Not that there's anything wrong with that, but I mean, you know, personally, I wouldn't buy a subdivision, but if I did, I would want to make sure, you know, that I know I'm only going to have one neighbor on your side, whatever the lot size is, if it tells me that. But just talk about it at the committee, I mean, I'm good with whatever y'all decide to do, but I just wonder if enough people know or hear about these things to be able to, if they have an issue, is what's the saying, something they don't want to get rid of another acre, then that becomes another question. I don't think, if they have any covenants and restrictions, I mean, they could sell off an acre, and acre, acre till they sold, they've fired it a lot five times.
Do you try to stay on line in those, we have had?
No, if they do it one every three or four years, or five years.
Oh, yeah.
If they did it all at one time, sure, but if they did, sold an acre this year, and an acre in two or three years, another acre in five years. Okay, well, I'll make a motion to reluctantly approve this variance.
And this variance, the paperwork is pending, what the Development Review Committee has asked for on the survey, showing lot, the lot number, and then lot A. So once that gets out, I will do that to get filed inside.
All right, motion made by Commissioner Martin, second by Commissioner King regarding 11B1. Any other discussion related to B1, stay on track, so. Here none, I'll call for the vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against? Eyes have it, motion passes. Move down to item number 12, Commissioner Martinez, discuss, take action on Commissioners' Court, minutes. Thank you, appreciate it.
The minutes have been reviewed by the judge and the county attorney.
Commissioners, entertain a motion on item number 12, take action on Commissioners' Court, minutes.
I'll make a motion that we approve the Commissioners' Court minutes.
Motion made by Commissioner Perdolo, second?
Thank you.
Second by Commissioner Martin, any other discussion regarding item number 12? Here none, call for the vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against? Eyes have it, motion passes. We're going to skip over item number 13, Miss Bonner says she has no reports to 34. Item number 14, we now have this gentleman, our county attorney, discuss, take action on.
Commissioners and judge have reviewed and approved bills totaling $312,115.14. And these, the cutoff was November 15th for anything for the project this year, so about $50.
you all individually to review. It was very productive, every day, we spent every day at the Capitol from sunup to sundown, met with a lot of lawmakers, very promising issues that we have, locally were answered for us, and hopefully we'll get them all open on some grants that could be coming our way. So look forward to telling you all about that, it was a great trip, and we actually met with our lawmakers and others from other states as well, but all our residents represent our state. Entertain a motion for adjournment?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion made by Commissioner Martin, second by Commissioner King, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against? Eyes have it, we urge adjourn. The time is 9:48.